I'd like to call the order of the April 21st, 2015, meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Invite you to stand if you wish, as Commissioner Williams leads us in our invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our blessed heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon each and every one of us. We pray now for your leadership and guidance, as we consider all the things that may come before us. Help us as we go throughout our daily life, that we may do the things that would benefit the people of this community. All this we ask in the name of Jesus and for his blessing only sake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
We're going to do awards and recognitions first. Just want to take time to recognize four people in our community. The Jefferson Awards are sponsored by WBKO and Bowling Green Daily News. We want to acknowledge Chris Cruthers, Jeff Jordan, Kevin Kirby, and Dr. William Russell for their work in the community, and congratulate them on their awards. And next, we have an opportunity to recognize some people in the audience that have special invitation to be here tonight, and I've asked Commissioner Williams if he would help us with that.
It's because I'm the tallest one up here, I get to do this well. Yeah, all these guys are taller than me, but that doesn't take a lot to begin with. It is my pleasure to recognize the Bowling Green High School Purples on a fantastic season, and we'd like, at this time, to issue a proclamation in recognition of that honor.
You're going to have them come up here?
Why don't you all come up here and stand around, or they can get you on camera, and I'll try my best to read this thing.
One behind us, Bruce. Behind us, too.
Look, they're still taller than I am.
I believe I could take some of them, slam dunk them.
We want to see that.
Sounds like a challenge, guys. All right, from the office of the mayor of Bowling Green, Kentucky, this proclamation: "The season of Bowling Green Purples basketball, 2014-2015. Whereas the Bowling Green High School Purples basketball team maintained a 31-6 winning season for 2014-2015, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Purples basketball team finished runner-up in the Kentucky Basketball State Championship in the KHSAA Sweet 16, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Purples basketball team won the 14th District Championship and 4th Region Championship for the second year in a row, and three out of the last four seasons, whereas the Bowling Green High School Purples basketball team and the coaching staff, led by head coach DG Sherrill, has dominated high school basketball in 2014 and 2015, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Purple fans are the greatest fans in Kentucky. Now therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim November 2014 through March 2015 as the season of Bowling Green Purples basketball in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and acknowledge this outstanding accomplishment in the area of high school athletics, and encourage everyone to congratulate all the members of the team and the coaching staff. Signed by Honorable Mayor Bruce Wilkerson, City of Bowling Green."
Congratulations, gentlemen. Coach, you got any words for us? Do you have any words for us?
Just on behalf of Bowling Green Independent Schools, and these young men, Coach Sherrill, the coaching staff, we appreciate the job, and thank you for letting us be here tonight.
This is an easy one. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate it.
Who gets the proclamation? There you go. Good job, guys.
Thank you for coming in. Thanks for a great season.
Thank you all for a great season.
Enjoy the rest of your school year.
And together, it's always what? A good day to be a Purple.
A good day to be a Purple.
With any other awards or recognitions?
I have none there.
All right, the first thing we have on our agenda is a public hearing, the purpose of which is to receive comments about the Annual Action Plan draft for year 12, and the amendment of the Annual Action Plan for year 11 of the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program.
I think Nick Cook's going to lead us on.
Mr. Nick Cook, in his first appearance here, so come right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As the mayor mentioned, tonight's public hearing is to discuss the Year 12 Annual Action Plan and Year 11 Annual Action Plan Amendment for the city's Community Development Block Grant Program. Before I get started, I just wanted to mention that we have a sign-in sheet being passed around tonight, so I just asked the members of the audience to please sign in, so we can document attendance this evening. Okay, so, this is direct federal funding that comes to the city annually from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is the city's 12th year of being a direct recipient of this funding, since the city reached a population of 50,000 and greater. And the funding is determined each year by a formula based on population, poverty, age of housing, growth lag, and overcrowding. CDBG recipients are required to have a five-year consolidated plan. The consolidated plan is developed from data research and citizen input, and establishes priority needs for spending CDBG funds in the community. And each year of the consolidated plan, the city is required to have an annual action plan, which identifies specific projects for funding. All projects funded with CDBG dollars must meet one of three national objectives. The first, and most important, benefiting people of low to moderate income. Seventy percent of the city's funds must meet this national objective. The second one being preventing or eliminating slum and blight, and the third, meeting urgent and community development needs. The Annual Action Plan process, this started back in January with a public comment period from December 30th through January 29th. During that time, we asked for comments from the public regarding community development and housing needs in the community. Also during that time, we had a public hearing on January 20th, where we kind of gave a brief overview of the CDBG program, as well as gave another opportunity for public comment. And then after that first public comment period, we had an agency application process for our program funding. This open process was from January 30th to February 20th. We received 10 applications this year. We had a review committee that reviewed the applications and gave funding recommendations. After that, we drafted the Annual Action Plan, which took a little over a month. Then we started our second public comment period on April 1st, and given the public the opportunity to review the Annual Action Plan, and offer any public comment. And then, of course, we're having our second and final public hearing tonight. After we go through the public comment process, then we have to begin the approval process, which would be the city commission approving the Annual Action Plan that's scheduled for May 5th. And then from there, the Annual Action Plan goes to HUD Louisville for their approval for the May 15 deadline. After we receive HUD's approval, then we must go through an environmental review process for each project or program funded with CDBG dollars. This is about a 60-to-90-day process, and once we get through that, then we can begin implementation of the Annual Action Plan, or the projects or programs that we fund may begin. So this year, the city is receiving approximately $522,215. Of that amount, 20% is going towards programs and public services. Another 20% is going towards administration and fair housing, and then the remaining 60% is going towards neighborhood improvements, and Brent Childers will be talking a little bit more about that this evening. So there were five agencies recommended for funding from the review committee this year. The first being the Bowling Green Warren County Welfare Center at $24,400. This was to provide one-time rental or utility assistance to LMI individuals at risk of eviction or utility disconnection, and they expect to serve approximately 162 households. Next was the Bowling Green Human Rights Commission at $34,400, and this was to continue fair housing, education efforts through workshops, presentations, information distribution, and receipt of housing complaints, and they expect to serve more than 2,500 individuals. The Housing Authority of Bowling Green was recommended to receive $45,000 for small business training and technical assistance in partnership with WKU Small Business Development Center, and they expect to serve 100 individuals and 18 small businesses. Then Big Brothers and Big Sisters of South Central Kentucky were recommended to receive $25,000 to provide mentoring services to at-risk LMI youth, and they expect to serve 23 people. Then Hope House Ministries was recommended to receive $10,000. This is for a new program. It's a 12-month transitional housing program for men struggling with substance abuse. They will be primarily targeting men exiting incarceration from the justice system, and this program will have literacy training, job training, GED training, addiction recovery courses, with the ultimate goal of sending these gentlemen back into society successfully and reducing recidivism rates. And they expect to serve five people with this program. And then $70,000 was recommended for the administration and oversight of the program. One thing we wanted to point out was, while the city is eligible to utilize $104,400 for administration, we actually only used 13% of our overall funding, which frees up additional funding for programs and services. So at this time, Brent Childers is going to begin his part of the presentation with the Neighborhood Improvements Program.
Thank you, Nick.
Last year, with the development and the approval of the consolidated plan, we created the BG reinvestment area, and census tracts 101, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 12, and that's actually just the city portion of 112. And historically, we've always had a focus in 101, 102, and 103. That was the enterprise community for about 11 years. The enterprise community designation expired several years ago, and what we saw, though, was issues that were in the EC, the enterprise community, were also in 104, 105, and 112. So we wanted to address some of those needs, so I developed this BG reinvestment area. We're looking at making all of our investments within this. And as part of that, developed the Neighborhood Improvement Program. And as many of you have heard me say over and over, we've selected 105.2, which is roughly Fairview to 14th, Chestnut to the bypass. This isn't the best map, but it's really hard to find a map of a census block group. And that's kind of the rough area of what we're looking at, and that's what we selected for investment for year 11 and year 12 funding. So as part of that process, there was kind of two ways that we went about this. We developed staff work groups, and the staff came from NCS, Public Works, police, and parks. And each of them were split into two different teams, and they completed neighborhood tours. And they just went out through the neighborhoods groups, and looking at what are ways to improve the neighborhood? What are things that we could do to make improvements? And where I thought they were going to bring back projects, I really saw more issues, and things that they just kept seeing over and over in the neighborhood. And so I'll get to how we've resolved some of that as we move forward. While they were out doing that, I was handling the citizen outreach part. That was my role in this process. And then we just completed this last week, so a lot of this is still in the final stages. So I set up four stakeholder meetings, two business owners and two pastors. One of the business owners lives in the neighborhood, and just sat down with them and had a conversation, about 30 minutes, asking them some questions, you know, what their experience is in the neighborhood, things like that. The questions that we asked, that I asked going through this centered around three simple things. What do you like about the neighborhood? What opportunities do you see on public property? And what opportunities do you see on private property? We asked those questions at stakeholder meetings. We sent out 800 postcards to every property owner and resident, had an open house at our building, invited people in, and asked those same three questions. Just to start the dialogue on what things do you see. And then we also did citizen surveys. They're a partnership with Hill House. They covered their primary service area, which is pretty much 10th, 11th, those areas. We used a couple of interns to do some outer areas, to do some citizen surveys, asking those same three questions. What we found was four main issues. This came from the conversations that I had at stakeholder meetings, at the open house, the citizen surveys, and also as the staff groups were out touring the neighborhoods. Suitable housing, street improvements, sidewalk improvements, park improvements. Those were the four things that just kept coming back. And somebody might say something in more detail, but it really centered around one of these types of issues. What you see here to the right is a recently completed CDBG project. This is the College View sidewalk project. And as we talk about this, you know, I just want to kind of refresh your mind on what some of the finished product looks like, because everything right now is still in the planning side of things. So talking about sidewalks, we proposed to do the Josephine sidewalk project, and that'd be Josephine from Lane to Lehman, and Collet from Josephine to the bypass. Right now, on the FY14 new sidewalk program administered by Public Works, there's a project out there to be built that will complete Lehman, sidewalk Lehman. Once that's done, that's going to create these gaps back up the line. This project was not in the sidewalk list. This came about because staff were out there and looking and saw, hey, we've got a gap here. This is an opportunity for us to fix this. As far as the park improvements, there is a park in the neighborhood, Reservoir Hill Park, and what we're looking at is doing some aesthetic improvements, retaining wall, the shelter. I say accessories, and I want to try to explain that a little bit more, looking at benches, trash cans, things like that, but also wanted to leave some opportunity, with the master plan still finishing its development, to leave some opportunity there. If something comes out of that, where we have some funding to make some improvements in that park, because it really is a neighborhood park, and also trying to address some of the parking concerns that we have up there. The main issue that we saw through all these conversations was the residential side, the housing, suitable housing part. So we feel like we need to develop a program to address some of those concerns. So what we're talking about is the Residential Improvements Program. And we're trying to, we want to make this very open, so we can address a lot of the issues that we see. So it could be demolition, could be acquisition, rehab, treatment of some environmental contaminants. We found out some information on some specific pieces of property up there, so we wanted to have a program where we could address some of those issues. Fourth part on the street improvement is the transit shelter. We would like to see it be placed on the Collet Lane. That's where the International Center is, to have it placed in conjunction with that sidewalk project, but we do plan to work with our partners at Go BG Transit to look at some of the other stops in the neighborhood, to see if there is a better location. We anticipate investing $590,000 of CDBG funding, that's year 11 and year 12, as part of this. I wanted to bring up two other things. One issue that kept coming up, that we didn't feel like we could address through this program, was parking. We saw it on the staff's side, we heard about it from our interviews and talking with people, and the parking concern was really focused in on the High and Park Street, 12 and 1300 block, and there's a couple of different factors that are contributing to that. One, you've had a lot of single-family structures that were built years and years ago, decades ago, when people didn't have a lot of cars. Now you have four or five people living there, four or five cars. There's not enough off-street parking to handle that. And also, with its proximity to the university, people park on the street, walk to class. So it creates some issues. We didn't feel like this program could address it, but that was an issue that kept coming up as we had the conversations with everybody. Also want to make mention, while this is going on, you all have been nice enough to give us some general fund money to do similar things. So what we plan to do with that is do some decorative improvements. It's not part of this presentation, it's not part of this plan, and that's more for the CDBG regulations, to keep some things separate. Some decorative improvements, and we also want to develop a similar residential improvement program to address some things that we haven't had the ability to address in the past. And I'm talking about things that aren't really code violations, but are things that need to be addressed. And what we're looking at is vegetative removal, brush trees, fences, outbuildings, things like that. Things that might not be code enforcement, but would still improve the overall quality of the neighborhood, but aren't also eligible for CDBG. So we're kind of trying to separate, and that's what Nick and I have been doing for the last week, is trying to figure out what's eligible, what's not, how do we make this work? So we're $590,000 of CDBG, year 11 and year 12. As far as the amendment, we proposed to use $315,283 in year 11 CDBG funds. Last year, whenever I presented the plan to you all, I said, I will come back and tell you what we're going to do with this money. I didn't think it'd take me a year, but the move to 707 took a lot of time away from me, so it took me a year to come back and tell you that. But that's what we plan to do with the year 11 money and the year 12 money. All told, between the general fund side and the CDBG side, we're looking at an investment of about $875,000. That's under what we have budgeted. So the way this process works is, we'll pick another area, we'll move to that area, we'll start the conversation again, we'll have staff groups going out and making recommendations. We'll come back with what are the needs of this area specifically, so we can address those and move on. So any funding that we don't use in 105.2, will then go into the next census block group. That's how we've designed it, and the goal is to have a continual program moving forward, so five, 10 years down the road, we can really look back and see some of the changes that we made. If anybody has any comments tonight, I'll entertain questions from the commission, or Nick can entertain questions from the commission first. If anybody does have any comments tonight, I do ask that they come forward, state their names, some type of contact information, so that we can touch base with them if we need to. Also, the deadline for written comments is April 30th, and those need to be sent to Nick. The plan is available on our website. Any questions from the commission?
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Childers or Mr. Cook? Comments? This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment about this particular action plan, this would be the time for you to come forward. Seeing no one, is there anything else, Mr. Childers?
No, sir. I'd ask that you close the public hearing.
Thank you, and that will be the end of the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Dale, for being here. Appreciate it. One thing I forgot to mention on our public items, on April 25th, that's this Saturday from 8:00 to 1:00, at Greenwood High School, the Warren County hazardous waste disposal is available. So have any paint cans, or electronics, or things that's available this weekend? And then, I believe next week, they'll start the tire, abandoned tire program out at their Louisville Road Storage Barn, so you can get in touch with Warren County Waste Management for more information. All right, do you have any comments, Mr. DeFabo?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. There'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 61A101F, discussions which might lead to the appointment of an individual employee, this exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussions of general personnel matters in secret.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. I couldn't read your handwriting. Did you have something?
No, I was just...
We'll tell them you recognized the students.
Yes, I'll pass that on, so you could recognize the Western students that we have.
We have Western students in the crowd with us this evening? Are you here as part of what program?
We're here with a class, a journalism class.
Journalism, okay. We appreciate you being here. How many of there are? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, maybe more? Thank you for coming. If you've got any questions or anything, feel free to stick around afterwards, but there's an agenda in the back, if you want to pick up and take with you. Thanks for coming. Okay, approval amendments from the special meeting on March 30th, 2015?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. We provide an opportunity for public comments in our regular meetings. If you have an item of discussion that you'd like to make comments about on something that's not on tonight's agenda, this would be that opportunity, if you have a moment. Seeing no one, we'll continue on with the second reading of ordinance BG 2015 number 7.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration, Subchapter 2-2, Board of Commissioners of the City of Bowling Green, Code of Ordinances, to revise the regular meeting schedule of the Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. This is the second reading. We've already discussed once moving to 4:30 for our regular meetings, rather than our four o'clock work session. Any other discussion?
Starting when?
Next time.
May 5th.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-47.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Travis D. Findley to the position of Labor 2 in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had some turnover in our Public Works Department. We advertised, we had 52 applicants for a Labor 2 position. We're here tonight to recommend Travis Findley to one of the open positions. Travis has a wealth of practical experience, and we feel can do a job for the city. I believe Travis is here.
Travis is here. Congratulations, Travis, on your promotion. We appreciate it. Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Bobby Fields.
We're watching you, Bobby.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-48.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of Christie Pruitt and Scott Gary to the Bowling Green Audit Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. This is a reappointment of two valued members of the people who provide an extra set of eyes for the city's finances. They review our audit and our audit program administered by the young lady sitting back there, smiling and hiding for us. Any comments or questions? We appreciate their service and continued service. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-49.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of Karen Foley and David Lee to the University District Review Committee.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. This is also a reappointment. Karen Foley works in our Neighborhood and Community Services Department. Dr. David Lee lives in the University District and provided good service for us over the several years. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015, number 50.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-31 for a mobile public education center for the fire department from Bullex Incorporated of Albany, New York, in the amount of $116,705.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. DeFabo.
Any effective approach to firefighting involves a partnership between the citizens of a community and a well-trained and well-equipped fire, professional fire department, or volunteer fire department. Part of the involvement of the citizens is to educate them. Our fire department has asked us to help with the education of the public by providing a mobile education center that will teach our citizens how to protect themselves from fire and things they can do. Chief Johnson has been here tonight, but Chief Rockroar is here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Similar program that you see the BG Mule pulling their trailers around town, is that correct?
It's similar. The mobile public education center is going to be based in our prevention division. It'll be used for anything from school-age kids all the way through senior citizens. It teaches disaster preparedness, firefighting in the home, that type of thing, so it's a very useful tool, and we're hoping it broadens our demographic in the community.
You have a static facility at the headquarters station. Is this on a trailer that you're going around?
We do. The static facility is used more for the smaller children. It's lower ceilings. Crawling through this is going to have a lot more electronics involved in it, and adult-based things that can be used for... We've had trouble in the past, sometimes reaching some demographics, teenage kids, they're easily disengaged. We'll be able to get them with this, so it'll help with those demographics.
Look forward to having a grand opening with it when it comes in.
It's going to be good.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015 number 51.
Municipal Order amending, Municipal Order number 201536, approving bid number 201529 related to the purchase of a utility vehicle, option one, from Dever Incorporated of Lexington, Kentucky in the amount of $4,995 to rescind that award and to authorize the award of the utility vehicle to the next lowest bidder, Cunningham Golf Car Company of Louisville, Kentucky, in the amount of $6,816 for a total bid award in the amount of $109,902.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denning, Mr. DeFabo.
As the commission will remember, we, a short time ago, purchased some new golf carts and as part of that purchase, we also identified the need for utility vehicle in the Golf Division. We bifurcated the award, one, most of the bid went to Cunningham, a small part went to Dever for the utility vehicle. They have since reconsidered their bid and have asked me dropped out. We still need the vehicle, it's our recommendation that we go with Cunningham Golf Company, the one that had most of the vehicles and the carts in the first place. It'll cost us a little extra money, but we feel it's a reasonable amount and we need the vehicle. Brent is here, Brent Belcher is here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 201552.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 201526 for City Hall Annex Ethis Project from Scott Murphy &amp; Daniel LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $66,013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
Commission remembers, we have undertaken two significant capital projects this year involving buildings, one with the NCS, which we have completed and had a grand opening, Brent's managing that facility. The other is City Hall, which has provided additional space for finance, IT, Gene Harmon, our law director, and will also hopefully house our new health clinic and our first systemic approach to records retention. Part of the annex is suffering from exterior envelope is suffering from deterioration. We're here tonight to ask you to allow us to spend $66,000 to essentially put systemic synthetic stucco to that building. Jeff Lashley is here to school you on the exact what that is, but we need it and we have the money for it and we'd like to do it.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 201553.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 201532 for design and build services for Commission Chamber audiovisual equipment from M3 Technology Group Incorporated of Nashville, Tennessee in the amount of $80,280.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denning, Mr. DeFabo.
He wants that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we don't need any discussion, we just go straight to vote, I think Joe's anxious on this one.
At four o'clock, just for the public, we had a show and tell about the need for us to improve our communication equipment in this facility to better allow the commission to be heard and talk to each other and for the people in this room to hear us as well as those listening to us on TV or via computer. Kim Lancaster made a good argument for the need to undertake this bid with M3 technology. She's here if you would like, if not, I would like to move forward with the vote.
Ms. Lancaster is here, she stayed over, came back to be with, is there any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make sure that we are talking about the smaller monitors that we, as part of this bid, and not what we saw in the presentation before.
Come to the mic and announce your name, please.
Kim Lancaster, yes. When we work with M3, we will tell them that we would like to make sure that we go from the 19-inch monitor to either a much smaller monitor and/or a tablet, depending on what we can work out, and that, they will give a full presentation to you all as well for you to approve the final bid.
Any other questions? Thank you for sticking around. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 201554.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 201535 for the purchase of a three-quarter ton truck for the Public Works Department from Gilly Hyde Chrysler of Glasgow, Kentucky in the amount of $27,809.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFabo.
As the MO, municipal order says, we would like to purchase a three-quarter ton vehicle, which is our main workhorse in many of our departments. We went out to bid, we had three bidders, the lowest responsible bidder is Gilly Hyde Chrysler of Glasgow. Jeff Lashley, I think, is still here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions?
Had one local bid, is that right?
Yes, they, we had Martin Cadillac, they did receive the local preference, even with that applied, Gilly Hyde Chrysler was lower.
The other automotive companies received the same bid locally, is that correct?
Yes.
Any comments or questions?
I might point out to Joe, there aren't that many local dealers that are going to sell three-quarter ton.
Yeah, I understand that, but I want that other person out there looking in on TV land, as we have in the past, saying that none of the local bid is bid on our products and so on, that's my point. And I realize, based on the order, based on the bid, that there's only a limited few that could, but that person out there looking at it on television doesn't know that.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 201555.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 201541 for sinkhole repairs from Fletcher Excavation LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $53,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
Since we live in a carst environment and we're subject to the vagaries of sinkholes in our area, we've been especially cursed this year publicly with a number of sinkholes. We went out to bid to repair those and we have secured Fletcher Excavating to bid on three of our projects. We feel that more are going to happen. We would like to increase the amount available for a sink fund war chest using Fletcher Excavating up to $53,000 because Fletcher won the competitive process. Jeff Lashley is here to explain if I didn't do a good enough job.
Are there any questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 201556.
Municipal Order approving amendments to the Historic Preservation Design Guidelines as set forth by the Historic Preservation Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, I believe we had a presentation on this last time, any other comments or questions? Just clarifications and administrative...
Steve Hunter is here, if the commission want the courtesy of hearing him or not.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Hunter? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2015 number eight.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a portion of a tract of land containing 17.7759 acres from AG Agriculture to HB Highway Business and RM4 multifamily residential located on Louisville Road and Bristow Road, presently owned by Hilda Jenkins.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denning, is there, Mr. Denning or Mr. DeFabo?
Thank you, Mayor. Items 12, 13, and 14 are all in the same family of rezoning as your protocol is. Steve Hunter is here to speak to any of the, or all of those. All of those were passed by the zoning board and presented for your consideration.
We've been going through things pretty fast and for the enlightenment of our Western students, we get a book of material to review before the meeting, so it may seem like we're going pretty fast through that, but we've had time to digest this information and read through it if we've had any questions. Generally, we ask prior to we get to the meeting unless there's something in particular you want to bring out. Mr. Hunter's here, if there's any comments or questions about this particular rezoning on the first reading. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Ordinance BG 2015 number nine, first reading.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 0.998 acre from GB General Business, RM4 multifamily residential, and LI Light Industrial to OPC Office Professional Commercial located at 501, 525, and 529 Park Street, presently owned by DWC Properties LLC, Walter &amp; Debbie York, and Commonwealth Health Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Williams, is there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2015 number 10.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 1.30 acres from AG Agriculture to HB Highway Business located at 2724 Nashville Road, presently owned by Gilbert, Barbie, Moore, and McAvoy PSC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denning, again, first reading of rezoning ordinance, any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2015 number 11.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, ordinance amending Chapter 25 Code of Ethics of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to amend subchapters related to gifts and other administrative revisions as recommended by the Board of Ethics.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFabo.
The Kentucky League of Cities recently pronounced City of Bowling Green as being an ethical community and having an ethical structure and policy and protocol. They revised our policy and made some recommendations to our Board of Ethics. Mr. Hawkins, representing, not Doug, the other one, is here tonight if you have any questions. Essentially, it raises the unsolicited gifts from what was an old amount of $50 to $100. I think that's probably the main ministerial change, but if you want to hear from Mr. Hawkins, he's here.
Mr. Hawkins, please step forward, be sworn in.
May approach the bench.
Yes, may it please the commission.
You and Doug aren't related, I take it?
We are not related, but...
You are not kin.
Before I came in, he said he was the other Hawkins. But I should have known better. It's, I think you guys have gotten a brief or have been briefed on the changes, they are not that substantial, but they are, we thought was important. We removed City Agency, under City Agency 25-2, the Bowling Green Enterprise Community because they no longer exist as a board, that kind of thing is a couple of the things that we pointed out to you. Under 25-81, gifts, we did include, this is one where no public official, employee, or board member of a city agency is defined in the code shall solicit directly or indirectly any gratuity regardless of value from any person. That's where it ended before, so even if you were going and asking for donations for a fundraiser, technically, we had issues with that after we went through the certification process, so we added, for your review and approval, the language, "and not for any intended or actual personal gain or benefit," so that way you can go out and ask for people to help the city fundraise for projects that are appropriate and not be in technical conflict with our code. We increased the gift level from $50 value to $100 value to, and there's administrative part of that, that there's another part of our code that references $100 values, and so we thought that would be consistent. The financial disclosures, we removed some of the Downtown Redevelopment Inc. as a city agency because they're no longer a city board. And finally, we, the city clerk along with the attorney decided to remove specification to need particular board, including Greenways Commission allows flexibility to the boards that receive state or federal monies which change often, so we don't have to keep coming back every time that may apply to the Code of Ethics. So those are the suggestions we've asked to be made, or asked for your consideration to be made at this time.
And our Ethics Board, I want to put you on the spot, can you name them, those that serve as well?
No, they do a, they do, we do a thankless, nameless job. I'm only a three-time chairman of the Code of our Board of Ethics, so they do what we do, it's really a good board to be on, though, they work hard and we have, I know Ms. Jackson, I can say, she's done a real good job of keeping us in line and on point.
See if I can remember, Linda Lee?
Michelle Tolbert?
Michelle.
Mike Holian? And Kathy Gum.
Yeah.
It's a rough bunch.
No, no, they're not. They're good at work.
Wonderful group of people, and thank you for all of your service there and taking your time to look through this for us, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 201557.
Municipal Order authorizing submission of a Land and Water Conservation Fund grant application to the Kentucky Department for local government in the amount of $75,000 for Friends of the Lost River Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
Our friends at the Lost River Cave are dedicated to improving the quality of their product they provide to the public there. One of the newest visions is to do what is called a nature discovery center, which would be focusing on educating young people and the public about nature and will have a shelter as well as an amphitheater for teaching. They are asking us to sponsor their application to the Kentucky Land and Water Conservation Fund. They're going to leverage 95 grand of their own money against 75 of the state, and they're just basically asking you to allow them to use the city structure to apply for that. Rhoadlandston's here, if you want to hear anything else.
Anybody have any comments or questions, or a question for Ms. Rhoad? Thank you for coming. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 201558.
Municipal Order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Downtown Redevelopment Authority Incorporated to lease Circus Square Park for concerts in the park and other Downtown Redevelopment Authority Incorporated events.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
One of the great gems of downtown Bowling Green during summer is the summer concert series put on by DRA. They're here tonight to ask us to allow them to use Circus Square Park to continue these concerts, and it's my understanding they also wish to increase them. So your vote tonight is to allow them to use the park at no cost to provide quality entertainment to our citizens.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-59.
Municipal order approving an amended and restated bulk fuel supply services agreement with Key Oil Company.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. There has been some changes with Key Oil, closed one of its service centers out on Scottsville Road. It was an important place for the city's vehicles and both Public Works, police officers, and fire department. Jeff has negotiated an opportunity to fill that void by working with our, with Key Oil, our bulk supplier, to provide a tank that we can access for public use at the Public Works Center. Jeff, did I explain that correctly or did I miss a few facts?
The closure of the Com Fuel Station on Scottsville.
Com Fuel, I'm sorry.
Is what has greatly impacted us. So what we, we approached Key, we approached Valor, trying to find a solution for this. Valor, we couldn't get a commitment that they were going to replace the station on, in the Scottsville Road area. We did talk to Key. We did receive written proposals from Key stating what they would do. More or less, they're providing the hardware to dispense fuel at our operations location at Lapsley Lane. We would be obligated to purchase fuel from them, which we are under our bulk fuel pricing, and construct a canopy over the oil dispense, or gas dispensing machines. And it's going to help us from a productivity standpoint, particularly us, it's right there, but we're providing that need for the south side fueling fire and police as well. This would be a closed facility to the public. It would only be available to city vehicles.
Are these above-ground tanks or below?
This is above-ground tank and it is called a Fire Guard Tank, so it meets all the extra standards and requirements for that use.
What Jeff also should mention, he's calculated it'll save us about $11,000 to avoid our employees and their vehicles traveling to the other lots, so we think it's a good deal.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015, number 60.
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of a portion of Nell O'Brien Court in lots five and six of Farmers Investment Company Incorporated property and Lot Two of Drury Inn subdivision.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fibo.
Although this is a simple acceptance of some lots into the city's domain, I would like Jeff to come up and explain to you some of the changes that are occurring in that area involving traffic signaling and possible other changes. Jeff?
Okay, with this development, one requirement that we had from our standpoint was to conduct a traffic impact study. The idea behind this is as businesses come in, they generate more trips, causing the need for a signal. Through this process, we identify where signals need to be applied and the development is causing the need for that, so we seek to have the developer put that in. The, we had held this subdivision, we had done a final inspection back some time ago, but to get this final issue worked out, an agreement has been approved and signed with the developer and they would be putting in the signal at a time that the warrants were met, meaning the number of cars coming through that intersection would hit a certain threshold, the signal would go in.
So the owner of the development is going to be responsible for the signal?
For the installation and then we accept it like we would a street or anything else for maintenance from that point forward.
And I asked that question because of the discussion we had a year ago, I guess, pertaining to another development where that point was not understood.
Yeah, and again, through this traffic impact study, we have folks that look at that, they look at it pretty hard and that's, our view is if the need is caused by the development, it should be their cause.
Any other questions or comments?
I got one other point of clarification.
Sure.
Just realized that the municipal order, the Nell O'Brien, was misspelled.
I'll fix it.
I would just bring that to your attention. Should be B-R-Y-A-N.
That'll be corrected when we'll think of that sign. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-61.
Municipal order approving an amended and restated agreement related to use of pictometry, imagery, and software between the City of Bowling Green and Warren County.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fibo.
One of the successful partnerships that we have with the county, with Warren County, is a contract to share the cost of pictometry. It's used by both us and the county as well as planning and zoning and others to help establish various properties within the county. The county has approached us since they have improved their computer aid dispatch to allow full use of the pictometry that the city has always enjoyed. We would like to agree to that and the cost is, would still stay the same. The reason being that they just developed a capacity that they could have had before but didn't have, so we didn't feel there was a need to surcharge them for them developing the capacity. Doug is here if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2015, number 12.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number three to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2015.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. As the commission knows, one of its responsibilities as well as staff is to make sure that our budget always stays in balance. You do this through a budget amendment process. This is amendment number three. Jeff is here if you have any questions. Many of these are just transfers and acceptance of new money, but if you have any question, Jeff is here to address this.
Comments or questions for Mr. Mizel? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-62.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Kobe Aluminum Automotive Products LLC.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hill and Ms. Paragon, myself, make up what is known as a job development incentive committee. We review requests from various employers to access withholding credit of approximately 1%. We review those, we vet those, the state participates. We're here tonight and Jeff's going to handle all three of these. Number 22, number 23, and 24 have been vetted by our committee and we recommend approval of all three and Ms. Hill is the chairman of the committee. Jeff can answer any technical questions related to any of the three.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Hill or Mr. Mizel?
Yes, sir.
One question, and I ask this every time we have one of those. Who monitors the company as to whether or not they meet their goals and guidelines set forth in this document? Do what and how?
The state monitors, monitors these credits through the Kentucky Business Investment Program, and so a lot of these companies have to reach their target of jobs to be considered activated or active on the state level with their incentives. They can't begin taking any incentives, say for the first one, Kobe, they wouldn't be able to take any incentives until they reached the 13 new jobs, had them in place, provided that proof to the state, and then the state would activate them, and then we would follow suit on the city side, activate their credit, and they allow them to begin taking the credits. After that, they have to report to the state periodically on their performance, if they still have those jobs, if they're still maintaining them, their levels, all of that. So basically, the state monitors this whole program. We pledge our 1% to participate here locally to allow these companies to reap their 3% credit from their state. So it's basically how the program works. Ninety, I'd say 99% of all our incentives that are brought to you here are kind of a piggyback on this state Kentucky Business Investment Program. So it's pretty, they've pretty much tightened things up when they, when they start. They used to be the old Cretas and all the other programs that they had, but when they started this KBI, I think back in 2008 or '09, they put a lot of new rules and regulations in that, that provided for more oversight on the program. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
And I guess, if you don't mind, I'll just hit all three of them real quick. Kobe is, of course, in the South Industrial Park. They're going to add the 13 new jobs, which equates to $45,000 incentive for the company over 10 years, but the city will receive roughly $38,000 in return for that one. And the next one is Capstone. I believe that's an expansion up in the Trans Park. That's going to produce 30 new jobs projected. The company is going to get $106,000 in incentives and the city will receive about $90,000 over the next 10 years. Then the last one is Bluegrass Supply Chain Services. I believe that this one's going to locate up in the Scottys Industrial Park off Louisville Road, going to produce 55 new jobs.